The tic-tac-toe.
Okay, yeah, now I got everybody.
Can we put our thumbs down?
Is that Bella? Call to order.
Yes, that's Bella.
Okay, great. So, good evening. I am going to call to order the City of Pacifica City Council Meeting of Monday, May 11th at 7:03 PM. I am going to read a council member's statement first before I do anything else. And that is from Councilmember Mary Beer. This is Mary Beer's exact statement. "My dear community, it has been difficult for me to step back from my commitment to serve you faithfully. However, in order to fully recover and serve adequately, I will be following the advice of my physicians and the urging of my family to honor my medical leave and not participate in this evening's meeting. I want to thank my fellow councilmembers for stepping in to fulfill my duties over the past month. I am humbled by the outpouring of support from the community and I look forward to returning to service at the May 26th meeting. Be kind, be well, and love one another. Mary." And Mary, we wish you well. Thank you. I will ask for a roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
And Councilmember Beer has an excused absence tonight as indicated by the statement read by the mayor. Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Okay, great. So, before we get started, I want to make a statement about our meeting format. This is a little bit long, so bear with us. "This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-25-20 and N-39-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and pursuant to the orders of the Health Officer in San Mateo County dated March 16th, 2020, March 31st, 2020, and April 29th, 2020, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. This meeting is not physically open to the public at a meeting space. City councilmembers and city staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting via cable of live stream while sheltering at home. How can you view it? You can view this meeting by visiting local channel TV station, local channel 26, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. Public comments. Public comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing comments to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. For this city council meeting, public comments may be made via email. Please indicate in the email subject line the agenda item number or note oral communications, and in the email content provide your full name, meeting date, the agenda item number, or oral communication for items not on the agenda, and specify whether you would like your comments read into the record during the meeting. Comments should be limited to 350 words and comply with a three-minute time limitation. The total duration of all public comments for each agenda item, including oral communications, will be limited to 30 minutes or subject to the mayor's discretion. Your entire electronic comment may not be read into the record due to time limitations imposed, and comments expressing similar positions may be summarized or bridged to provide for greater number of individual comments. But your written comments will become part of the record and will be available for public inspection." So, the meeting, the format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed, if we have any technical difficulties. You may check on the status if there is an issue of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates. Okay, I think that's it for the notes. Our councilmembers will be physically raising their hands, so I will look for physical cues. And we will have a salute to the flag led by Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Okay, are we ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have anyone that wants to pull anything from the consent calendar? Or do we have any public comments? Councilmember O'Neil?
I guess if there's no public comments, I move to accept the... I'm sorry. I move to, I make a motion to pass the consent calendar, as stated, noting there's three declarations of emergencies on it.
Is there any public comment for coffee?
There is. We do have public comments on item number four from the consent calendar.
Okay, do I have an extension?
I was gonna second.
Okay, so do you wanna make?
I will amend the motion to drop item four.
And I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, we will have a roll call vote.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And the consent calendar passes with a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, so item number four, do you wanna read the public comment?
Okay. For item number four, I have the following public comments. The first comment comes from Rose Bay. She states, "Thank you for your proactive approach and efforts to protect the economy, health, and well-being of our city and residents during the COVID-19 emergency. As you are voting to continue our local emergency, I would like to share my concern as to how small cell wireless communication facilities, WCFs, be treated during this time. We want WCFs to be implemented in a thoughtful way with citizen involvement and planned expansion. There is serious potential for a negative effect on property values and aesthetics to our city. The city, state, and nation have very successfully used the precautionary principle to protect its residents from COVID-19. We ask that the same principle be applied to new small cell WCFs. Our concern is that the wireless providers are using the COVID-19 emergency to expand a hasty and unsupervised deployment of evidently harmful, poorly-tested small cell 4G and 5G WCFs. While there has been federal legislation to further this aim, many of these newer acts and orders are being brought to the Federal Appeals Court to examine their constitutionality as they clearly demonstrate federal overreach into municipalities' rights. Nearby cities have recently halted new WCF applications and new impending permits, only allowing the legally required maintenance and repairs due to the COVID-19 emergency. Pacifica can do the same under state and FCC laws to implement tolling, pausing of all the telecommunications applications, new or pending, during the local emergency and for a reasonable time afterwards to resolve any permitting backlog. Governor Newsom's Executive Order N-33-20 includes maintenance of communications infrastructure, but it does not provide essential status to new wireless facility construction. Such tolling is also consistent with federal telecommunications laws. See FCC 18-111:157 in 2018 in parentheses. "For the sake of the city and its residents, please follow the precedent of Simi Valley, Santa Barbara, and others who have ceased accepting WCF applications for a 90-day period. This will give Pacifica the time it needs to join the dozens of neighboring municipalities, including Santa Cruz, Hillsborough, and Petaluma, who have already adapted their city ordinances to specifically define and legally regulate small cell wireless facilities. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter." And she continues with reasons for tolling WCFs. That's the end of the three-minute comment period. However, we received the same letter also from the following individuals, four other individuals, Rick May, Jennifer Wong, Sunil Bhatt, and Megan McKenna. With that being said, I'll use the time from one of the other commenters to continue with the reasons for tolling WCFs that they provided in their letters. So, the reasons for tolling WCFs. Number one, staff productivity may be impacted by technical difficulties at this time. This results in the pace of permit processing generally occurring more slowly than usual. A written directive can be issued to provide all interested parties with prior notice of the city's reduced capacity and consequential tolling of the processing of wireless permits to avoid noncompliance with FCC shot clocks. Number two, in-person meetings cannot take place during the permit application process. Site visits, consultant analysis, and fire department review may be impaired. Three, it will not be feasible to implement public participatory rights in this process. Residents have the right to participate. Tolling the processing of wireless permits when the city has also slowed processing of other permits is lawful, nondiscriminatory, and prudent. Number four, the city may be exposed to liability if unable to comply with FCC shot clocks or declines to accept new applications without giving pre-notification to applicants. If the city decides to continue accepting or processing new applications, it may be unable to meet the usual 60 to 90-day shot clocks. See FCC 18-111:109." And that's the end of that comment. The next... The next comment on this item comes from Maria Lunardi. "New cellular facilities are not essential and should be delayed until after the shelter in place is lifted and the community can be present. I am a single mother of three boys, 22, 15, at Terranova High School, and nine. I'm extremely passionate about our youth, earth, and this beautiful coastal town that I blessed enough to call home. Pacifica has been such a sacred place for some many of us. These last few years, I opened a yoga meditation business within the community. I'm greatly concerned with this decision being made when many do not know and understand options for safer technology. It is extremely unfair to move forward or to move forward when the community cannot be present. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Maria Lunardi." That's the end of that comment. And that concludes the comments that I've received on item number four. I'm just gonna take one moment to check to see if anything else has come in.
Okay.
Item. And I don't see any additional comments.
Okay, great. So, Mike?
I move that we pass our consent item number four on the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember O'Neil, second by Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
And for consent calendar item number four, voting, Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number four passes with a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. So, we will move on to oral communications. Oral communications will be read into the record as received via email to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. Again, if you have a public comment, please email publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. Do we have any oral communications?
We do. I'll begin reading the oral communications. And then just a reminder that oral communications are limited to three minutes per comment, so I'll be adhering to that timeframe. And then also, we are limiting the comments to 30 minutes per item for the agenda unless subject to the mayor's discretion to extend that time.
Okay, do we have a significant amount for coffee?
Right now, I have about 13 comments for oral communications.
Some of them are on the same subject?
Yeah, some of them are similar. We don't have any that are the exact same comment.
Okay.
To see.
Thank you.
So, the first public comment comes from Terri Etchelbarger. She states, "Good evening. Last year, the County of San Mateo and four cities recognized Gay Pride Month in some way via flag raisings or proclamations. This year, I urge Pacifica's City Council to do the same, recognizing June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. The many ways to do this were in an email that I sent last week. I hope you've had time to review that, and I hope to hear from you soon. Terri Etchelbarger, Pacifica Member, San Mateo County LGBTQ+ Commission." And that's the end of that comment. The next comment comes from Sherri Wieland. Sherri Wieland states with the subject line, "No RV parking on Terranova and other streets in Pacifica." And she states, "Please ban RV parking on Terranova and other streets in Pacifica. This is not safe, as there are two schools on Terranova. It will also impact availability of parking. Thank you for your consideration and attention to this important matter. Sherri Wieland." And that's the end of her comment. The next comment comes from Maria Festidio with the subject, "RV Parking. The issue of homelessness and RV living is not one that can be taken lightly, and I don't think there is a solution that can be implemented overnight. But I do not think risking and changing the daily lives of the residents of Terranova Boulevard is the answer. Terranova Boulevard has a lot of kids that walk by themselves to school and activities. In my run this morning, I ran by people walking their dogs, parents with their kids, and people strolling along. When school is in session, kids are walking to and from Ortega to the bus stop. When soccer and softball season are here, the streets are busy with families enjoying the games. With RV parking here, that would not happen. Our lives have already been changed with SIP. What more? With RV parking here, we would not feel safe outside. Many of the townhomes face outward to Terranova. Decks and windows are easily seen. Are you ready for the increased amount of petty theft reports or any other crimes that would occur because you do... Because do you know who dwells in these RVs? Parking can be hard on these streets, and sometimes even with our designated spots, most families have more than one cars. As someone who works night shift and has to constantly go back and forth with my kids, I do not want to park farther than I already have to. I just want to park and sleep. Can we also discuss the hygiene aspect? Right now, our street has green garbage cans for dog waste."
Somebody is not on mute. Can you please...? Thank you.
"Can we also discuss the hygiene aspect? Right now, our street has green garbage cans for dog waste. Can you imagine what would be in those garbage bags if RV dwellers are here? Let's not forget about the recent incident of waste being strewn across the Sun Valley Market parking lot. Parking of vehicles over six feet tall be banned on all city streets all at the same time, and to make the Safe Parking Program plans public and transparent as these may vastly impact our neighborhood." And that comment comes from Maria Festidio. The next comment comes from Danita Rosemaron. "I am a longtime resident of Pacifica and have been using the sidewalk on Terranova regularly. I have recently noticed an RV parked for some time in front of the church, and it is encroaching on the sidewalk. Its large mirrors protrude into the sidewalk and are a health and safety concern. I called and reported it to the police, and they had the RV moved so that it didn't have the mirror protruding into the sidewalk two feet so that someone can hurt themselves walking or running, which I have seen the high school students train on this street many times. Since the RV has moved, now it's back and is protruding on the sidewalk and is another health and safety concern. I have not called the police yet, but will. This seems to be a bad idea to have large RV vehicles parked on the streets that are small and they don't have enough room to safely park their RV without encroaching on the sidewalk. I am wondering if your study took into consideration this encroachment and how far they have to park into the street so that they do not encroach on the sidewalk. They have large mirrors and have to park like two feet or more to not encroach on the sidewalk. This is a health and safety issue, and people can hurt themselves running and/or walking, not to mention if other vehicles can safely drive by since they have to park farther away from the curb." And this comment comes from Danita Rosemaron. The next comment comes from Linda Prasagni. The subject is 5G installations. "Hello, City Council. 5G is really just a name for the newest generation of mobile network designed to connect virtually everyone and everything together, including machines, objects, and devices. For many people, that is not a good thing. It will change life as we know it, not for the better. People tend to think change will benefit us all equally, but it won't. So, the better question to ask is what to do, the rest of us pay for it? Technology is moving so fast that lawmakers in society haven't had time to evaluate the cost-benefit balance. The biological cost to using uncontrolled 5G technology is tremendous. It facilitates high-speed mobile transfer of large data via pulsed millimeter wave so they can connect everything in the world while making it unsafe for people to step outside, not to mention the effects on birds, other animals, insects, and plants. This begs the question, what kind of world do we want to live in? The industry claims it's just like 5G and 4G, but that's simply not true. They are also trying to use an averaging system to pretend safety where the radiation from the pulses will far exceed safe levels, but averaged together with the times the antenna is not emitting, it will appear to be operating within limits. That's why testing is so important, and the way testing is performed should not be controlled by installers. A growing body of research establishes links to certain cancers in people living near cell installations. 5G technology will make the soup more toxic. This has already impacted property values near installations from 2.5% to 20%. Further, not even one insurance company anywhere in any country will insure them. So, there is no compensation for lost property value, economic hardship, or medical bills for people living or attending school nearby. The welfare of those affected should outweigh any perceived rights of installers. What City Council can do is work with citizens to adopt a protective ordinance that encourages installation of high-speed fiber optics in lieu of unfettered 5G rollout. Reliance on the speed of light fiber is safe and faster than anything we will ever need. A growing number of cities are doing this. Santa Barbara City Council put a 90-day moratorium on applications, and I ask the Pacifica City Council to do the same. Until such ordinance can be reviewed and adopted, please prevent any antenna applications from being approved. Thank you. I believe science can save us if we only listen soon enough and ignore the biased assurances of so-called industry experts who are paid to sell the product. There are safer ways." And Linda Prasagni also provided a comment about oversized vehicle parking ban, but that's the end of the three-minute comment period, so that will be submitted into the written record. The next comment comes from Larry Lewis. "I am a resident of Pacifica, and I am curious what the city has planned for the parking lot closures. From what I can see, the major impact of the closures has fallen on the local businesses and community members who, what access the parking lot near San Pedro where Grocery Outlet is located. The parking lot is overrun without of-town surfers and beachgoers, leaving us little to no room to park. This obliviously difficult for residents, but also for the struggling business who are trying to remain open. What are your plans for, one, reopening these parking spaces? Or, two, enforcing the parking restrictions at the beach? Take care, Larry Lewis." The next comment comes from Matthew O'Malley. The subject is homelessness among registered sex offenders in California, CASOMB, 2008, in Houston, in opposition to allowing RVs to parking along Terranova Boulevard. "Dear Mayor and City Councilmembers, I am writing in support of banning RV parking along Terranova Boulevard and the surrounding streets due to safety concerns for the children who attend Ortega Elementary, Terranova High School, Terranova Christian Preschool, and those who frequent the Pacifica Sanchez Library, all of which line a strip of road less than a mile on Terranova Boulevard. The overall population of these schools combined at any given time surely must be the highest concentration of children in all of Pacifica, and we should do our utmost to support and protect them. And having a possible criminal element so close by is far from ideal. We can all agree that homelessness is not a crime. However, as noted in the attached report by the California Sex Offender Management Board, quote, 'Since the implementation of residency restrictions, the number of sex offenders registering as transients has significantly increased,' end quote. Another quote, 'Homelessness increases the risk that someone who has offended sexually may commit another sex crime,' end quote. Although this report is dated 2008, a simple Google search with the words, quote, 'sex offenders and homelessness in California,' end quote, brings startling and sobering statistics about this unfortunate and complicated situation, which alone should be enough to give a decision-maker pause. I understand there are rules, laws, that are supposed to keep registered sex offenders away from schools. However, what sort of policing will be in effect to ensure that people occupying a given RV along Terranova isn't a sex offender? The very nature of the transient lifestyle may impede the individual who finds themselves in such a living situation in making a clear decision of what area they should avoid in our small town, as well as keeping up to date of their whereabouts with local authorities. We should make it easier for them and direct them away from the most vulnerable of our citizens. There is also a financial cost to consider here. There will be a financial cost to the city in providing the extra police support needed in the area to protect the children, but also, what if something dreadful happens and is linked to a resident from one of these loitering RVs? I can easily see a parent suing the city at all for the decision of allowing individuals living in RVs so close to the schools, and if the individual turns out to be a sex offender, how could they not lose in court with massive penalties to the city? I understand you are facing tough decisions, and I'm sure you realize once a decision is made as to which streets in Pacifica..." And that's the end of the comment period. And Mr. O'Malley attached a report from California Sex Offender Management Board to his email entitled, "Homelessness Among Registered Sex Offenders in California: The Numbers, the Risks, and the Response," dated December 2008. The next comment comes from Bonnie Miller. The subject is tonight's City Council meeting, Agenda Item, "Allowing RV Parking on Some City Streets." "Dear City Council, I wanted to echo the sentiment of Matt O'Malley, Sun Valley, in today's Nextdoor post copied below. We all know homelessness is complex..." Valley, in today's Nextdoor post copied below. We all know homelessness is complex with no easy fixes and will get worse locally due to the global pandemic, and our small city filled with amazing community citizens and services has limited resources. My own recent experiences here include concern about safety when an RV, old car, and a motorcycle took residents up, took residents up and down my narrow winding Sun Valley Street for several weeks. I think ticketing seemed to encourage departure one by one and eventually. Park Mall has had concerning problems with RVs, trash. It breaks my heart to see camping out on Lindemar Beach and the walkway and to hear other communities send homeless here. We don't have a lot of resources to manage this. I'm doing all I can to pay my taxes, mortgage, et cetera, to support our infrastructure in our wonderful city." And she copies below the segment that she referenced in, from Nextdoor. With subject tonight, email City Council, have your voices heard, and the content is as follows. "A City Council meeting is to be held tonight to allow RV parking on some city streets, including Terranova Boulevard. Within a one-mile stretch of Terranova Boulevard is a high school, a grade school, a preschool, a library, and various elderly apartments. Supporting a homeless encampment, be it an RV encampment or other, involves risks to the community, be it increased trash, drug use, or the increased risk of sexual predators. We can all agree that homelessness is not a crime, especially these days. Many of our fellow Pacificans are just a few steps of becoming homeless themselves, but there is an element out there in the homeless community which are not your most upright-standing citizen. As noted in a report by the California Sex Offender Management Board, quote, "Since the implementation of residency restrictions, the number of sex offenders registering as transients has significantly increased. Homelessness increases the risk that someone who has offended sexually may commit another sex crime," end quote. A simple Google search with the words "sex offenders and homelessness in California" will bring startling and sobering statistics about this unfortunate and complicated situation, which alone should be enough to give a decision-maker pause. There are rules, laws, that are supposed to keep registered sex offenders away from schools, however, what sort of policing will be in effect to ensure that people occupying a given RV along Terranova isn't a sex offender? The very nature of the transient lifestyle may impede the individual who finds themselves in such a living situation in making a clear decision of what area they should avoid in our small town." And that's the end of the time for that comment. The following comment comes from Heather Page. The subject's RV parking. If you are to allow RV parking, do you think it would be good to have people get a permit or register in some way so we know whether or not these people are convicted sex offenders and they can have some sort of registration sticker on their vehicle? I would prefer not to have RVs parked on the streets since there are no sewage hookups. I would also prefer not to have small homeless encampments scattered throughout the city, in parentheses, needles, trash, sex offenders, et cetera. Thank you, Heather Page. The next comment comes from Lisa Mendez with the subject, "Parking on Terranova Boulevard." Dear Mayor and all the City Council, I am a homeowner and taxpayer that lives on Terranova Boulevard. I have found myself very concerned that my street will be filled with RVs and if needed, I will have no parking available to me. To allow RV parking on Terranova is an albatross in the making. Quite a few people nowadays don't just park their RVs, they are living in them, and I do not believe that it should be permitted in a school zone. Please listen to all the complaints and stop this from happening. Thank you and sincerely, Lisa Mendez. The following comment comes from Suzanne Moore, Pacifica Manor resident. May is the month honoring affordable housing and it seems proper to take a moment to envision a time and place when everyone has a home. This is certainly a dream we all can embrace. The Pacifica Resource Center has demonstrated past success in helping our homeless find housing. During this COVID-19 pandemic, homeless providers are urging immediate interventions to provide hygiene and stabilized safety since our homeless are five times more likely than the general public to contract the coronavirus. Residents in Pacifica express support of a program to assist homeless on a path to stable housing, yet ask important questions about safety and public health. The proposed parking permit pilot was developed to address public concerns. Clients vetted by the Pacifica Resource Center and assigned to case managers would access waste management, life services, and a path to stable housing. This fall, Pacifica is expected to begin enforcement of its oversized vehicle ordinance. Fall will also see a likely second wave of COVID-19. Shelter protects us all. I'm suggesting that Pacifica give the pilot a year's trial. In a year's time, we will likely have a protective vaccine and better treatment for those who become ill. In a year's time, we could evaluate the pilot study and critique its effectiveness and community impact. In a year's time, we may be closer to achieving our dreams of homes for all. Let's take this chance to begin the end of homelessness." And that comment comes from Suzanne Moore. The following comment comes from Eleanor Natwick. The subject is Terranova RVs. Again, I am expressing my strong disapproval of allowing RV parking on Terranova Boulevard. It is a densely populated neighborhood with two senior housing complexes, a church, an elementary school, a preschool, a high school, a library, and a steady amount of street and foot traffic. Many of the residents in the townhouses park their vehicles on the street. From the shortage of street parking is already an issue for taxpaying homeowners. It is not an RV park. Pulling out of driveways is very difficult and dangerous when you cannot see around large vehicles parked on the street. Do any of the committee members live in the area? Do you care about the Pacificans who do? Why do you continue to propose permitting RVs to camp on Terranova?" And that comment comes from Eleanor Natwick of Terranova Boulevard. The following comment comes from Lorraine Bannister. The subject is RV parking. Dear Members of the City Council, please ban parking of vehicles over six feet tall on all city streets, all at the same time. In addition, please make the safe parking program plans public and transparent as these may vastly impact our neighborhood. Terranova is home to single-family homes, townhomes, small businesses, two schools, senior apartments, et cetera. Parking is not ample for current residents and all will be adversely affected by the city's decision to allow these vehicles to park here. Thank you, respectfully, Lorraine Bannister of Terranova Boulevard. And that is the end of the public comments that I have received prior to the council meeting. I will now check in with Deputy City Clerk Elizabeth Brooks to see if there's any additional comments that we have received during the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and members of the council, Elizabeth Brooks, Deputy City Clerk. We have one more email that came in for oral communications. This is from Anita Reese of the Pacifica Resource Center. She writes, "Pacifica Resource Center remains open during the statewide shelter-in-place order. Our open office hours are Monday and Tuesday, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM, Wednesday, 1:30 to 7:00 PM, Thursday, 1:30 to 5:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We are available other hours by phone. PRC, Pacifica Resource Center, continues delivering groceries to 260 families throughout Pacifica weekly thanks to support from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, generous donors who continue to bring grocery donations, and volunteer drivers. PRC also continues to provide financial assistance to help cover the cost of rent, mortgage, or other critical needs due to COVID-19, thanks to SMC Strong and SF Chronicle's season of sharing funds. PRC started preparing taxes again by drop-off or by providing materials electronically. We are coordinating volunteer tax preparers to be at PRC alone and when the offices close to the public, so it may take a bit longer to complete returns. Taxes are due by July 15, 2020, and PRC's shower program for unhoused Pacificans is also still available by appointment. We are the main entry point for unhoused families and individuals in Pacifica to access shelter options, including options for at-risk individuals. Lastly, the deadline to complete the census has been extended. You can complete the census online at my2020census.gov or by phone at 844-330-2020. Information from the census is used to determine vital funding for healthcare and emergency service funding, like the response to COVID-19. #Everyone counts. If you or someone you know need help with groceries, financial assistance for rent, mortgage, or other critical needs, tax preparation, or access to homeless services, please contact PRC at 650-738-7470 or via our website at pacresourcecenter.org. That concludes the remaining public comments. Oral communication.
Okay, great. And nothing has come in since you began reading?
Correct. Nothing else.
Okay, great. So I will close oral communications and I will open council communications. Any takers? Councilmember O'Neill? You're on mute.
Well, zoomed in a couple meetings in regard, you know, county-wide meetings, congestion management. I also attended the first organizational meeting for the Jefferson High School District plans on how they're going to reopen the schools, which is going to be a major challenge. And they just had their first presentation on the budget cuts that all the schools will be facing the next fiscal year, as will, as will we. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Verter Beckmeyer, you're on mute?
I almost remembered all by myself to unmute. I've been pretty busy with online meetings and I'm really trying hard to stay on top of what's going on with all of the small business support opportunities. There was another town hall that was produced by Congresswoman Jackie Spear on April 29, and I was pleased to see quite a few Pacifica businesses on that call, on that meeting. And one thing that this shelter-in-place has, I guess, the opportunity that it's afforded me is the chance to view the County Board of Supervisors meetings, which usually with work, isn't something I can do. And now I'm finding myself tuning into those and there's a lot of really useful information there about what's going on in other parts of the county and projects that are happening. So it's a really good source of information and I was able to connect one of our nonprofits with that meeting, kind of in the moment, too, for public comment. So it's, it's just really a lot of advocacy and trying to learn about all the resources, communicate about all the resources. I was on a call last Wednesday about what's called the Great Plates Program, which is sponsored by CalOES, Office of Emergency Services, with funding from FEMA, and it's a partnership between the state and our county. And there was a presentation on that during our county call with the county manager today. It's an opportunity for seniors who are not already receiving services that are state or federally funded to obtain three meals a day delivered to their homes. There are very specific qualifiers. There was something in Connect with Pacifica this week about it, and we can supply additional information through the city if someone is interested through parks, beaches, and recreation. I think Senior Services is helping with that. I know a couple of restaurants, I think four, in town have been approached and at least one has applied to be a provider for those meals. So one of the issues with that program is it has such a short duration from the time it was announced until the time it was going to be over, but it has been extended to June 10, and it looks like it may be extended beyond that, although that hasn't happened yet. But we are one of only six counties to date in California that are participating in that program. A lot of cities and local jurisdictions were interested, but it seems like the counties are not really jumping on it. And San Mateo County is, which I'm really pleased about. I've also been keeping the Cabrillo principle updated on the great progress with the Crosswalk Project that's been happening on Crespe. That's across from Cabrillo School. That was funded mostly, I believe, through the Safe Routes to School Grant, and it's looking really, really beautiful. And I will just add one thing that I would like to figure out how we can have a discussion about the LGTQ plus, a letter that was written and read at the beginning of the hour. That's, I did receive email on that, as well as a number of other items, but that's one that I don't know how we can have a discussion about it. Maybe it could be agendized for May 26. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Otterlaus?
Hi. Three times a week, I attend the county meetings. They always have good information every time. I know Anita Reese talked about the census, but please, every person fill out the census, documented, undocumented. Children, make sure everybody is counted in the census. I know that our city's doing really well, but we'd like to do better. I attended the Balboa meeting for the residents of Balboa and the progress on their streets being repaired and their homes. And they all got some good information. It was a really calm meeting. I attended the first virtual send-off of an employee and I am sad to see that Thomas Myers is gone to go help his brother run for an election and he will be missed. I attended tons of other meetings that aren't relative, but, and I try to answer every single email that we get. And yes, I said this before, but we're getting a lot, a lot of emails, and thank you all for writing the emails. So that's it for me.
Thank you. I want to echo what Councilmember Otterlaus said. We're getting a ton of emails. So if we're not responding right away, it's not because we don't care, it's because we're responding to a lot of emails. So bear with us and our answers are changing every day because the information changes every day. So a yes, or a no, or a maybe today could be completely different tomorrow. So patience really is our friend right now. I just want to touch on Mayor Verter Beckmeyer. Clerk Coffey did draft a proclamation for Pride Month, acknowledging Pride Month, so we should read that probably the first meeting in June. So we got that covered. And I also neglected to send that email out, so my apologies. I wanted to, I'm on all the calls, accounting calls as well. We join those three times a week. And one of the things that came up today is stimulus checks. Congresswoman Spear let us know that if you haven't received a stimulus check and you qualify for a stimulus check, you are gonna get it quicker if you go to the IRS website and enter direct deposit information there. So if you're waiting for one in the mail, it's gonna take longer than if you go to the IRS website and enter your direct deposit information there. So hopefully that gives some people a better idea of how they can get more their money faster. And then just sort of a recap in terms of what's going on in town here with the health order. We are now able to recreate within 10 miles of our residents. The guidance is still to shelter in place and recreation means really exercise. So So, uh, we also have a restriction on the, at the beach. No accessories, no umbrellas, no coolers, no beach chairs. Uh, the idea is that we are all there to, uh, get fresh air and exercise and, and, and run around and, and do the things that keep us healthy. Uh, but that we are maintaining a safe distance, that we are, uh, wearing a, um, face mask if we're not exercising. Um, and please don't take matters into your own hands. If you see someone that is not wearing a face mask, um, you can, um, you know, report it not to the person right there. We, we just don't recommend that you, uh, you take the chance. The beaches, beach parking lots are still closed. And under the current health order, they're required to be closed. Unfortunately, we're getting a lot of emails about, uh, parking in neighborhoods. And, uh, given the fact that now folks are able to recreate within 10 miles of their house, the issue has come up a lot. And please know that our, uh, police department is monitoring that situation and assessing it every day. Uh, unfortunately, the, um, resident-only parking signs don't really seem to be working. So, uh, stay tuned. Things may change soon and, uh, just everyone have a little more patience, please. We also know that everyone is struggling with, uh, opening up their business and they're curious about when they're going to be able to do it. And, and why is one service deemed essential and another service not essential? And please know that, uh, we, city staff and our police department are doing our best to, uh, enforce, uh, the current health order and our main priority is health first. So any interpretation of that health order is to keep our community safe and healthy. And trust me, we want and we need services to open soon. I need my hair done. I know that most of us do. Uh, and we want it done, but we just need to be patient. And that's really all I can say. And, and be patient with us and kind because we're just doing our job. And our job is to keep you safe and healthy and to follow the health order. And that's what police department is doing as well. And, uh, and also that you can now view the cases by zip code on San Mateo County Health's website. The information is to be taken lightly because that data changes every day and there are a lot of different factors. But you asked and it is now available. So, uh, with that, I think I saw, uh, Mayor Potem Beckmeyer's hand. Go ahead. You're on mute.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick things on that. One is the Economic Development Committee is meeting tomorrow night, um, for the second time since the, uh, shutdown without our, uh, former Economic Development Director, who has left us. Um, as, as Councilmember Vadoles mentioned, um, Assistant, uh, City Manager Lorenzo Hines will be with us on that meeting. And one of the things that's being worked out with the EDC volunteers is a, you know, as soon as business can reopen per health, what kind of informational outreach can the EDC members provide support? And they're working on that right now. So planning is going into it. I've personally been kind of pushy, I'm afraid to say, but, um, on the calls with the county about restaurants, we're getting a lot of inquiries from our restaurants. And they too, while they can't open now, they're wanting to work on planning for the time when they can be so they can hit the ground right away. Uh, sometimes these orders come like a Friday and they're effective Monday. And businesses need a little more time than that to roll out. So, um, so that's happening. The second thing I wanted to mention is, uh, that there, there was discussion and a desire to get additional testing sites in the North County or in San Mateo County, actually, which was denied by the state. However, the services that have been stationed at, um, the Event Center in San Mateo, which is provided by Verily, which is a part of Google, um, the medical part. Those services are going to be moved around the county, starting, I believe the plan's going to be released on the 18th. And there will be information available about where you can go for testing. Um, they're switching from the more invasive nasal, um, swab to a less invasive one. And intending, they've received a ton more test kits. The intention is to rapidly and more, much more widely expand testing to the general public. There used to be a requirement that you had to meet certain criteria. People were being turned away from that test site. I have, I know of people whose doctor sent them there and they were turned away. But now it's going to be anybody who wants to go to that. So stay tuned for more information on that. I know it will be publicized through the city's website. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Vadoles?
That, that's what I was going to talk about, the van.
Oh, good. Okay, anyone have anything else? All right, we'll move on to staff communications.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Martin and Mayor Potem Beckmeyer and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have several updates I'd like to provide. I'll start with the data from the weekend regarding beach visitation and the San Mateo County health orders. The summary of data from Friday through Sunday, and we had numerous officers out engaging, uh, visitors as they have for several weekends in a row now. Uh, they made over 1,800 contacts with visitors. Uh, 471 were from outside of the 10-mile recreational radius. That represents about a 26% uh, amount of the contacts they made. And all of those that they had requested, uh, that should leave after informing them that they shouldn't be visiting out of the 10-mile radius, uh, complied accordingly. As the mayor mentioned, the new health order does have a prohibition on beach accessories that, um, tend to, uh, have folks not doing essential exercise at the beach, but just sitting and relaxing. And the police officers did engage a lot of visitors regarding accessories. And interestingly, a lot of locals had accessories, um, and, and had seemed to indicate that, well, that, that prohibition doesn't apply to, uh, to Pacificans that are at the beach. It's only applies to those that are outside of the area. And, and our officers, uh, informed everyone that they spoke with that, no, that applies to everyone that's going to the beach. And they didn't get any pushback on that. And our continuing educational approach, uh, continues to help, uh, in this matter. Also related to coronavirus response, I, I wanted to, uh, indicate that the city is really digging into the weeds and details, uh, with an internal, uh, what we call the ROOP or the ROOP, uh, group. You know, when this virus started, we have, we, we initiated our COOP, which is our continuity of operations plan. And now as we're evolving towards gradual reopening, the acronym, uh, that seems to be at play is the ROOP, the Restoration, uh, or reopening of Operations Plan. So we have a staff team internal that's digging into all the numerous details amidst, uh, the remaining, uh, continuing uncertainty about a lot of the measurements and thresholds necessary to evaluate how or when to reopen. But the good news is, is that we're, we're working hard on that to, uh, be able to bring an update and, uh, some of the discussion items and things being considered to the council at the next city council meeting. So, uh, at, at least an informational item regarding that, that process. So I wanted to mention that, that the, uh, you can look forward to the, the ROOP, R-O-O-P. Mayor Potem Beckmeyer mentioned the Economic Development Committee's meeting tomorrow. I was going to mention that. I won't, uh, repeat what, what she said, but the committee has an ongoing role uh, in, in really brainstorming about how to, uh, assist, uh, provide technical information assistance to businesses and, and brainstorm those ideas. Um, so that's going to be an important meeting. And, uh, as she also mentioned, Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines is, uh, is the staff liaison for that committee for the time being. I also, uh, wanted to mention the Great Plates Delivered Program, which Mayor Potem Beckmeyer also mentioned. All that I'll add regarding that is, uh, just to emphasize that it's a great program. San Mateo County really jumped on it. Uh, the county is the lead on the program. And we are pushing information out to get both restaurants in Pacifica signed up to participate as well as any eligible residents in Pacifica, community members that could benefit from the program. The data that was shared today is that, uh, so far, uh, 16 eligible members of our community have signed up and will be benefiting from that program. And I'm sure more to come as well as, uh, more restaurants signing up. So, um, another food access and, and delivery is another essential part of this response. So it's a great program, uh, that is launching. I will complete my comments there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, we will move on. There are no public hearings this evening. Uh, we have, uh, item for consideration, number eight, consider resolution appropriating $50,000 from the city's undesignated general fund balance to contribute to the San Mateo County Strong Fund to assist Pacifica small businesses. And, um, City Manager Kevin Woodhouse, you will give us a report.
Thank you. I'm back. Uh, thank you. I, I'm excited to, uh, present this item tonight. And as the council is aware, at the budget study session at the April 27th meeting, one of the budget strategies that was presented for the council's information was this item. Exactly to designate a, uh, an amount of funding from the city's unallocated general fund balance of $50,000 as economic stimulus money that would go to the SMC Strong program, and I'll talk about that in a, in a minute. And in turn specifically benefit Pacifica small businesses. I should mention that I believe that Roseanne Faust from the, uh, San Mateo County Economic Development Association is with us on this call in case there are questions that are more detailed and specific about the SMC Strong program. Just a quick summary that on March 24th, and this is an indicator of, uh, you know, uh, another great action region-wide that, that we've taken in this response, the, that we've collectively taken, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors approved a $3 million donation of Measure K funds to seed what's called San Mateo County Strong, a COVID-19 Recovery Fund, established in partnership with the Silicon Valley Community Foundation and the San Mateo County Economic Development Association. $1 million to individuals and families needing assistance. $1 million for nonprofits, organizations that provide services and support the most vulnerable in the county. And $1 million for San Mateo County small businesses. The item tonight is, uh, well, let me back up. Out of that $1 million for small business support, the allocation that would be designated to Pacifica small businesses is $60,000. And the estimated grants per business are $10,000 per business. So that would serve six businesses in Pacifica. The application process for all of that has closed. Uh, some of those eligible businesses have been selected and, and, and awarded or will be awarded that money. So tonight, the, uh, recommendation is to augment that Pacifica-specific money with $50,000 to serve an additional, almost doubling that six businesses to elevens, to serve an additional five businesses. SAMCDA, the, the San Mateo County Economic Development Association, has selected the, um, the San Mateo Credit Union as the administrator of this program. And criteria have been developed for how businesses are eligible and to be selected on a first come, first served basis. And those criteria are listed in the report. And the recommendation to use the SMC Strong program is really premised on, uh, that, that process is in place and a third-party administrator is in place for that money. City staff, uh, doesn't have the, the resources to independently ourselves administer a grant program. So we're recommending going through the SMC Strong program. Numerous cities throughout the county have, uh, dedicated, uh, their own funds for, uh, businesses specifically in their cities. Eight or nine, uh, of the businesses thus far, and others are considering. And, uh, again, the recommendation is to approve this $50,000 and we will provide that money, if approved by the council, to the, uh, to the fund and get it out to the businesses that are selected. Uh, the alternative that exists for the council is to not approve that, that funding or to, uh, approve a higher amount or a, a lower amount. You know, later tonight, you're going to hear the presentation about, uh, the city's, uh, general fund budget. And, uh, you know, while we have a very challenging year, uh, for our budget and, uh, you know, forecasted deficits that, that we're working to close, the important piece about this is that the $50,000, um, coming out of the unallocated general fund balance is an investment in us getting back to business and getting those businesses reopened that continues to generate tax revenues that we rely on in the future. So while it costs us a little bit of money in this difficult time, it's an investment and a stimulus to try to continue our tax revenue generation in the future. I will, uh, stop there and answer any questions. And in addition, um, Ms. Faust is available to answer questions.
Mike?
Hi, I have a question in regards to, um, the criteria on, I think it, on the, on page two of the staff report, it says the small business eligibility criteria. And one of, the question I have is, and either Kevin or Roseanne, Roseanne might be able to answer this, is have any other cities put a requirement on there that would be a tax revenue generating business? For instance, I was talking to a friend of mine that works for a major bank and there was like a lot of law firms going in and kind of slopping at the federal trough. And I would hate to see, you know, the lawyers and everybody else go in there when we have a restaurant, a retail store, deli or whatever, not be able, you know, that brings in revenue to the city, not be able to get it. So I was wondering if that requirement's been put on at all or considered.
Thank, thank you for that question, Councilmember O'Neil. I will, uh, turn it over to Roseanne in case she has an answer to that because I'm not familiar with what other cities have requested.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Martin, City Manager Woodhouse, and, uh, Councilmember O'Neil for the question. So there's no additional criteria at this point that is placed by other cities that have contributed to the fund. We said a for-profit business. So we didn't necessarily, uh, distinguish tax generating. And I'm, I'm trying to think of some of the, the grants that have been provided thus far. To the ones, I mean, there have been restaurants, there's been retail shops. There have been some dental businesses. I, I'm just, I'm trying to mentally go through it, but we said for profit. But cities have not, uh, placed additional criteria on it. And it's not something that the credit union would be able to, uh, because since the criteria was set when the grant was opened up, the expectation of the folks that applied for it was this is the set of criteria that we're working with.
Okay, so we couldn't, uh, we could not add another criteria for the Pacifica businesses. Okay, that answers the question. Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neil.
Um, Mayor Potem Beckmeyer? You're on mute.
Hello, um, thank you so much for being here, um, Roseanne, with us tonight again. You presented to the EDC, you were on our call, you have been, you presented to our city council. Really, and you're on every county call. Really appreciate your leadership and your support for this process because it has been amazing. I do want to ask about something I saw on the county call today. If you wouldn't mind actually just going over quickly for the public to know the number of applications that were made to this fund overall. And, and I, you know, I realize that there was a different number that started, but the completed applications. And then if you have it in front of you, the number of completed applications from Pacifica businesses. Thank you.
So the number of completed applications was 1,232. There were 2,700 applications started in the first four hours. And in some cases, those were double. So it ended up being 1,232 completed applications. If my memory serves me correctly, I believe it's 27 Pacifica businesses that have fully submitted applications. Now, we don't know if they're all qualified because the credit union is reviewing them in the order that they were received because they're timestamped. And then they're doing the first six Pacifica businesses that would be allocated with the county fund. And then if the council was to allocate the $50,000 this evening, they will do the next five in order of the timestamp. And then if there was additional money raised perhaps by residents of the city of Pacifica or additional funds brought in through SAMCDA's efforts, because we're trying to raise as much money as possible, then the businesses would, then they would start to look at, okay, the next number in order. So I hope that was helpful, Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you very much. That is helpful.
Councilmember Varralos?
So the credit union is the one who determines who gets the loans, I mean, the grants, sorry. They solely decide based on if the application is complete, if they follow the criteria, and, and they were first in line.
Yes, because the credit union is, has their underwriting team that is reviewing all the documentation. And they are, because they're mortgage underwriters, they're familiar with the necessary documentation. And we wanted to take, we wanted to be very, very careful of any type of fraud. So we felt that the credit union was the best, the best entity that could review the application for its completeness.
Okay, yeah, so that keeps it out of the hands of the city councils and puts it solely into the credit union. Thank you for explaining that.
No, you're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Any other questions? Okay, so the proposed action, Roseanne, thank you for being here. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
The proposed action is moved to adopt a resolution appropriating $50,000 from the city's undesignated general fund balance to contribute to the San Mateo County Strong Fund to assist Pacifica small businesses.
Mayor Martin, before you entertain a motion, I'd like to let you know that we do have a few public comments on this item.
Thank you for reminding me. I will open the public comment.
Okay. So the first public comment I have on item number eight is from Dan Studging. And the subject is public comment item eight, giving $50,000 to SMC Strong to assist Pacifica small businesses. Councilmembers, I'm Dan Studging and I oppose this expenditure because it does not stipulate that the money will be returned solely to Pacificans and Pacifica-owned businesses and exclude sole proprietors and partnerships with storefronts but no employees, two groups most likely to fail during the COVID crisis, thousands of other nonprofits with proven track records that will kick back pennies on the dollar as SMC Strong has promised. But while this resolution's stated goal and title is to, quote, "to assist Pacifica small businesses," unquote, only a third of the SMC Strong Fund is even earmarked for small business. And again, there is no requirement to assist Pacifican-owned businesses. The cities of Atherton and Colma have the highest per capita income and sales tax revenue respectively, yet have only donated $15,000 each. Pacifica, with its tiny fraction of assets and disposable funds, is being asked to donate more than both Atherton and Colma combined. Reject this resolution and in the future only give Pacifica money to support businesses owned by Pacificans. Thanks, Dan Studging. And that's the end of his comment. We have an additional comment on item number eight from Beth Lemke. And she states, "I am extremely grateful and humbled by the generosity of the San Mateo County community as I learned Friday that a grape in the fog was awarded a grant. I am impressed by the efficiency of the administration and dispersment of the grants. Councilmember Sue Beckmeyer has stayed in touch with me from the moment we went into quarantine and has been a valuable resource since. I thank her for helping to shepherd me through the process. I know she cares deeply for the Pacifica business community. I hope that the council will agree to provide funds to the San Mateo County Strong Foundation as a show of solidarity and needed support. Thank you. Beth Lemke, A Grape in the Fog." And that's the end of the public comments that I've received on this item.
City Clerk Coffee? I wanted to mention that I received a note that PCTV may not have us live right now.
Okay.
So can we check on, on that?
Yeah, should we take a recess to check for the broadcast?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute break. We'll check back in at 8:25. Thank you.
They may have missed, they may have missed live streaming the public comments. They have been recorded, but I think that it's prudent for me to read those two comments into the record again for the, for the audience.
Okay, it's 8:26. Looks like Councilmember Varralos is joining us. And I think we're good to go. So PCTV is now going to be airing us again. We may have missed some of the public comments, so we're going to reread those public comments into the record again. Clerk Coffee, thank you.
So just as a reminder, we're on item number eight, which involves a consideration of a resolution appropriating $50,000 from the city's undesignated general fund balance to contribute to the San Mateo County Strong Fund. And these public comments relate to that item. So the first public comment comes from Dan Studging. And he states, "Councilmembers, I'm Dan Studging and I oppose this expenditure because it does not stipulate that the money will be returned solely to Pacificans and Pacifican-owned businesses and exclude sole proprietors and partnerships with storefronts but no employees, two groups most likely to fail during the COVID crisis, thousands of other nonprofits with proven track records that will kick back pennies on the dollar as SMC Strong has promised. But while this resolution's stated goal and title is, quote, "to assist Pacifica small businesses," unquote, only a third of the SMC Strong Fund is even earmarked for small business. And again, there is no requirement to assist Pacifican-owned businesses. The cities of Atherton and Colma have the highest per capita income and sales tax revenue respectively, yet have only donated $15,000 each. Pacifica, with its tiny fraction of assets and disposable funds, is being asked to donate more than both Atherton and Colma combined. Reject this resolution and in the future only give Pacifica money to support businesses owned by Pacificans. Thanks, Dan Studging." And the second public comment on item number eight that I received is from Beth Lemke. She states, "I am extremely grateful and humbled by the generosity of the San Mateo County community as I learned Friday that a grape in the fog was awarded a grant. I am impressed by the efficiency of the administration and dispersment of the grants. Councilmember Sue Beckmeyer has stayed in touch with me from the moment we went into quarantine and has been a valuable resource since. I thank her for helping to shepherd me through the process. I know she cares deeply for the Pacifica business community. I hope that the council will agree to provide funds to the San Mateo County Strong Foundation as a show of solidarity and needed support. Thank you. Beth Lemke, A Grape in the Fog." And that's the end of the public comments that I've received on item number eight.
Okay, and nothing's come in since?
No.
Great. Okay. So proposed action, unless you need me to read it again, looking for a motion. My girl, Neil?
I move to adopt a resolution appropriating $50,000 from the city's undesignated general fund balance to contribute to the San Mateo County Strong Fund to assist Pacifica small businesses.
Second? Okay, and I have a quick question for Roseanne. Is, is it true that sole proprietors, it does not apply to sole proprietors?
So sole proprietors that had W4 employees were able to apply. But a sole proprietor as an independent, no. It's just one person.
Okay, great. So because that was a bit of confusion when things first got rolling. So thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Varralos?
And this money is specifically earmarked for Pacifica businesses. It's not going into the general fund of SMC Strong. These are for defined as Pacifica businesses that are receiving these funds.
Yes, absolutely. This will allow more Pacifica businesses to be helped.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
For item number eight, Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And that motion passes with four in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you.
I see a hand from Councilmember Vatterlaus.
So again.
I would also like to thank Roseanne for everything that she does. It's enormous what you're doing. And like Councilmember Beckmeyer said, you're on the calls every day. You're doing so much. You go to all these council meetings by Zoom. And I just wanted to thank you very much for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roseanne, yeah.
Thank you to Mayor Martin, to members of the council, to City Manager Woodhouse. I can't tell you how much your contribution really will mean to the businesses in Pacifica. And thank you. And thank you to Mr. Hines and the Economic Development Committee as well. Thank you so much and I wish you all a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item nine. Consider resolution to establish a parking in Lufy in the Sharp Park specific plan area. And we have Deputy Director of Public Works, Sam Bautista here to present the staff report.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works, Engineering and Guild Services. And tonight we have James Edison from Wildan Financial Services, who is the managing principal. And he'll be answering any questions you have regarding parking in Lufy. The item before you tonight is a consideration to adopt a resolution establishing the Sharp Park specific plan parking in Lufy. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick overview of tonight's short presentation. We'll be discussing what is a parking in Lufy. And then we'll go into the updating of the Rockaway Beach specific plan parking in Lufy. And then going into establishing Lufy, and then going into establishing the Sharp Park Parking in Lufy, and then right to the recommendation. So what's a parking in Lufy? So parking in Lufy's are used in larger cities and suburbs, and usually in areas of sudden development growth or redevelopment. Developers can choose to pay the in-lufy fees or provide the required parking spaces for the development. Parking in Lufy's offer developers an important tool for maximizing parking flexibility, and these fees would go into its own designated fund. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides are just a review of the last council meeting to discuss the process staff went through to update the Rockaway Beach Parking in Lufy. This will give you the background and analysis for the Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking in Lufy. So staff, staff recommended increasing the Rockaway Beach Parking in Lufy since it was not updated since its inception in 1986. Staff identified the rough costs of construction per parking space of municipal parking structures in the Bay Area by talking with contractors and consultants. And the average cost of the above, of above-ground parking structures in the Bay Area averaged to about $45,500 per parking space. The table on the right of this slide shows a list of cities and, and their parking in Lufy's with Emeryville being one of the, the cheapest in the Bay Area at $8,315. And Palo Alto with one of the highest, which is over $70,000. The average of these, of all these cities turned out to be about $40,260. Next slide, please. The city contracted with Wildan Financial Services to assist with the Parking in Lufy update, update study based on a parking structure feasibility prepared by Watcher Design, who is a known parking structure consultant. The updated Parking in Lufy was calculated at $88,529 per space, which is a reasonable amount, given the cost to construct the parking structure in its, in the location in Rockaway Beach. The high fee could become a deterrent to new development or redevelopment and slow the growth of the area. A lower Parking in Lufy would provide flexibility and stimulate real estate development. At last, at the last council meeting, City Council approved increasing the Rockaway Beach Parking in Lufy from $3,000 to $40,260 per space, which is the average of the parking in Lufy's based on the data that I provided. Next slide, please. So these next slides will discuss establishing the Sharp Park Parking in Lufy. The city would like to implement a Parking in Lufy in other parts of the city. Staff has identified the matter Sharp Park, Petropoyne, Lindemar, and Fairmount neighborhoods as districts that could benefit from the construction of parking facilities. Staff has begun work on a Parking in Lufy analysis for the Sharp Park area since right now we are preparing the Sharp Park Specific Plan. The specific plan will include a parking demand study. Although it's not finished or completed yet, the specific, the specific plan will likely include parking strategies such as public parking lots or structures to address parking needs in the area. Wildan analyzes, analyzes establishment of a Parking in Lufy for the Sharp Park Specific Plan area. Next slide, please. Wildan reviewed the Sharp Park area and potential centralized parking options and believes that the construction analysis of the Rockaway Beach Parking in Lufy also applies to the Sharp Park program. The size of the expected parking garage is similar. Construction costs should be roughly the same, and therefore the cost, the cost per parking space will roughly be the same. Because the city elected a B level at less than half of what the actual cost of parking will be, the city can also set the Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking in Lufy at or around the same level. So as you see, you know, the, the cost, the cost was $88,529 per space, but the city elected to, to set the fee at $40,260. So staff recommends that the new Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking in Lufy be set at $40,260. Next slide. So the new Parking in Lufy would be applied to all new developments or redevelopments in the specific plan areas. For new developments, staff would analyze the type of project and its parking requirement. For redevelopments, staff would determine the parking requirement for the existing use and the new use and determine if there is an increase or decrease in parking demand. If the developer cannot provide the required amount of onsite parking, the developer could pay the Parking in Lufy for the number of spaces not provided onsite. When the Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking recommendations are completed, staff will review them and prepare feasibility studies to calculate the cost of the improvement. Staff will present the calculated fee to City Council and recommend any necessary adjustments to the new Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking in Lufy. Next slide, please. So in closing, staff recommends adopting the resolution establishing the Sharp Park Parking in Lufy and set the fee at $40,260 per space, which is based on the construction analysis of the Rockaway Beach Parking in Lufy. I recommend adding the fee to the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, and include a construction cost estimation factor similar to other city fees, the construction cost impact, CCI, and adjust it automatically on an annual basis. And lastly, any project applications which are submitted to the planning department prior to the adoption of the fee will not be subjected to the Sharp Park Specific Plan Parking in Lufy. And with that, that concludes my short presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sue Vaterlaus?
One of the things that Wildan said in their report was that not all areas should be the same fee, but I guess that you guys have determined that Rockaway and Sharp Park would have the similar structure for parking, and therefore the fee should be the same. Could it end up being the same for the whole city? Or just, we'll just determine it for each area when they come up?
The latter. We would, we would evaluate the, the different types of parking strategy and, and cost, you know, cost estimates and, and determine the correct fee for each area.
Thank you.
Mike O'Neil? You're on mute.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Couple of questions in regards to, okay, lots of times, especially in the city, you see, you know, banks are open during the day, but at night they leave the chain down so that other businesses could use the parking lot. I've also seen where if you have concurrent uses, like a, a building with, let's say, dentists on top and restaurant on the bottom, they have, you know, different kinds of traffic, the dentist during the day, the restaurant at night. Will that, will they be able, in this program, be able to have one parking space but maybe count for two businesses?
I think it, you know, I think what you would have to do is determine, you know, evaluate the space and determine how much parking is in, in the building and also determine, you know, because we're talking about, it sounds like what you're talking about is, is shared parking between different types of uses, correct?
Well, the same developer builds a building that might have two different types of businesses. You know, certain businesses, CPAs, lawyers, dentists, whatever, are daytime businesses, but then you get a restaurant is more of a nighttime business. And I've seen other cities be able to, I don't know that, I see Tina just popped on, and I know there's a word for it, but I don't know what that word is for shared parking spaces. Or will have, will a developer be able to buy parking spaces from an adjoining builder that might, building that might have more than enough spaces?
Yeah, did you want to answer the question?
Sure. Hello, council, this is Tina Waremeister, Planning Director. So I, I think the shared parking arrangement that Councilmember O'Neill is speaking about would be addressed in the specific, specific plan standards and perhaps zoning standards when we do a zoning update after updating the general plan and the specific plan. And that's really where that, the ability to do something like that would come into play. It is complicated because typically if you're sharing parking between individual properties, there's usually some long-term, very, very long-term agreement that needs to be put in place and perhaps covenants on the property. And so sometimes a, a, a property owner who has different prop, different uses on their own site is better, is in a better place to take advantage of that rather than sharing parking with another separately owned property next door, for example.
Okay, so this measure wouldn't necessarily prohibit us from being able to do that in like negotiations or whatever with, when a property is being planned and checked?
Right, this would, this would not tie the city in the future to allow shared parking agreements.
Okay, or prohibit it?
Right.
Either way, okay.
And, and this is Michelle Kenyon. Good evening. I just wanted to add to the complexities that Planning Director Waremeister was discussing. We also have the complex, complexity that we will need to look back to the study to analyze how, whatever they're doing with parking in fact relates to the study that was done on what the costs would be for any parking in Lufy.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, so we, are there any public comments?
We do have one public comment that has come in on this item. The public comment is from Cindy Abbott, and she states, "Dear Mayor and council members, thank you and city staff for working on how to address parking issues in the city of Pacifica. The increase in parking in Lufy's approved on April 27th, 2020 for the Rockaway Beach area recognized how the city of Pacifica's fee structure in parentheses, $3,000 versus an average of $40,240, $40,260 in parentheses, was significantly below that of other cities and moved to address that. At the same April 27th meeting during City Council deliberation, City Manager Woodhouse remarked that a Parking in Lufy is, quote, 'a mechanism to start building a fund over many, many years,' end quote. Further discussion covered how there is no way of projecting how quickly an adequate fund could be built resulting in the actual construction of new parking facilities. While in theory a valid and sustainable way of sharing parking infrastructure and costs across an area, a Parking in Lufy program without a plan to build a structure in the near term is often only a way for developers to pay their way out of providing appropriate code-mandated parking in the impacted area. And with the proposed fee structure, a developer would pay less than half of the cost of a single parking space in today's dollars. Parking is an issue today in many neighborhoods in the city of Pacifica. Creating a Parking in Lufy program in connection with the development of the Sharp Park Specific Plan without any other plan may only serve to exacerbate the already difficult parking situation in the area. Before implementing this program, please develop and communicate a more thorough strategy that addresses parking needs that exist today and are growing more difficult with each new development permit approved. Thank you, Cindy Abbott, West Sharp Park." And she included an attachment with the same comments. That's the end of the comment. And I've received no other public comments on this item.
Okay, I'll let Mike make a comment?
I just wanted to clarify, as we discussed last meeting, this, this Parking in Lufy will be payable by both business and residential entities, correct?
That is correct. Exactly. It's for, it's for any type of the development in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
This question is really for Director Waremeister. With the, where we are in the process of developing the Sharp Park Specific Plan, and that we had to kind of put it on pause during COVID. And the reference to the parking study that's going to be part of that, can you give any, I mean, I realize COVID is an unknown at this point, an endpoint to that, but with regard to the parking study, has that been done yet? It'll be done? And, you know, what do you anticipate the time of being on our, the, of the results of that study?
I think I captured your question, you were coming in and out, but the, the background analysis, that existing conditions, the, the survey of parking availability during, on the weekends, the evenings, daytime, that has been completed, so the background analysis has been completed. Now the consultant is putting together their findings and recommendations, and that's anticipated to be a part of the specific plan. And so it will be, I don't have a schedule with me tonight, but it will be published along with the specific plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Martin, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, if I may chime in, I just wanted to be clear, and, and I don't think Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer was, was asking this question, but about the effective date of this recommended fee is, is not contingent on when the parking study and the specific plan adopted. The recommended, recommendation is that if the council approves this fee tonight, it'll be included in our fee schedule for adoption in, in June as part of the budget for next year. And, and so that would be the, the effective date of this Parking in Lufy.
Thank you. No more public, oh, sorry. Hang on one second, Mike. Any more public comment? I never close public comment. Kirk Coffee?
No more public comments on this item.
Okay, great. I will close public comment. Councilmember O'Neill?
I was just gonna make a motion. Move to adopt resolution to establish a Parking in Lufy in the Sharp Park Specific Plan Area.
Councilmember Vaterlaus?
Second.
Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Kirk Coffee?
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlaus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And item number nine passes with a vote of four in favor and zero opposed.
Great, so, thank you very much, James and Sam. We will move on to item number seven, our proposed 2021 general fund budget update. City Manager Kevin Woodhouse and Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines will give us that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I'm gonna make a very brief intro comment here and then turn it directly over to Assistant City Manager Hines. All, all that I wanted to comment is that I, I wanted to appreciate all of the work that Assistant City Manager Hines has been doing, as well as the finance staff and all the departments on this year's budget, because it's a really difficult time to be trying to estimate revenues for next year. And as you know, one of the budget strategies recommended is that we will be planning on doing. for next year. And, and as you know, one of the budget strategies recommended is that we will be planning on doing a pretty significant mid-year budget update during next fiscal year because the effects of COVID-19 on the economy will hopefully be a little bit clearer at that time. But right now it's difficult. So we have included, and ACM Hines will go over this information, but we're just in doing our best to estimate our various revenue sources and have our expenditures meet, meet those at this point in time.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines Jr. here. I'm here to present the 2020, 21 budget. These are interesting times financially. What I want to do tonight is give you an overview of the issues that we're facing in the current year. When I use the term current year, I mean the current budget year, 2019, 2020. And I also wanna go over some of the issues that we're dealing with in the budget year, and that's the 2020 dash 21 budget. We are looking at deficits in both years, thanks to the COVID situation. And, but we have thus far been able to close those deficits. But as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, that this budget and this season, these numbers are somewhat fluid. And I wanna basically let you all know, these are the numbers as they stand right now. I may come back to you two weeks from now with a slightly different plan, or a month from now with a slightly different plan. Uh, we are monitoring things and estimates and markets and the news cycle daily and looking for any tidbit or shred, shred of information that we can use to, to influence our estimates. So Sarah, let's go to the, the first slide. So the first slide is the budget. And so what I've done is I've striped in the 2019, 2020 mid-year budget, which is where we were back in February. And all was looking good. We were actually scheduled to make a slight deficit. I'm sorry, slight surplus. And so all, all was well. However, then the pandemic hit and then we had to sort of reestimate things. And so you see that in the 2019 dash 2020 COVID-19 impacted budget. We're gonna see sort of the specific details of closing this particular budget gap. But what you should understand is that from the mid-year to the, to this 2019, 2020 budget, or my estimate from the mid-year to the close of this fiscal year, our revenues are down about 1.7 million. So we actually swung from a $256,000 surplus to about a $1.5 million deficit. And I'm gonna show you how we close that deficit in the current year in just a second. In the budget year, we are looking at about a 1.747 budget deficit because of declining revenues. And we have taken measures to close that gap as well. And as I mentioned earlier, as these numbers and, or as we get better information, these numbers will shift a little bit. And I, and, and I will be updating them and I will be letting you know why the updates are occurring. But when we move to the mid-year this year, it will be a slightly different mid-year. It will be a lot more involved. It will essentially be another budget process. Because by that time, the whole pandemic will have revealed itself, hopefully, and would have revealed its ultimate impact on our revenues and our expenses. So, uh, let's go to the next slide. So the next slide is the strategies that we use to close the current year deficit. So it was, as I mentioned earlier, we went from a $256,000 surplus to about a 1.497 deficit. And so what we were able to do is that we had a number of projects that were authorized in the 2019, 2020 budget that were either not implemented fully or not implemented at all because of timing. Um, and we were able to garner savings from sort of freezing those positions that, freezing that, those particular projects at this point in time. So we've got, the first group of savings came, comes from the planning department and it totals $573,000 in savings toward closing the current year gap. And that's, that project is a priority development area application. The document scan project, because of various issues, has not been implemented yet. We are moving toward doing that next year. The Affordable Housing Impact Fee Study. The reduction, and there was also because of the activity in our planning department. We were able to reduce some of their contract line items, the legal expenses and various other contract expenses. And so the total savings from the planning department is 573,000. From general government, that includes the city manager, city attorney, all the admin units, economic development and city clerk. We were able to garner savings from the Vision 2020, 2025 project, which has not been implemented, but is scheduled for next year's budget. The unhoused in Pacifica Task Force, we only used about 2,000 of those dollars. The EDC budget, to my knowledge, has not been utilized and so that's available for savings as well. We built in $90,000 for additional election costs for this year's budget. And those dollars were, it turns out, were not needed because of, we did not opt to do any special elections at this point in time. And then there's the limited term staffing for sustainability. That position has not been filled. Just due to issues with candidates. And so that totals another 335,000 in savings. Yes, Councilman O'Neill. I'm sorry, did I?
Yeah. Yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, getting back to the planning, okay? The priority development area application. Now that's a application that if approved, we could actually see some material differences such as more housing, both affordable and market, more SAM Trans service, so we have more, you know, and, you know, and potentially more property tax revenues. So by not doing it this year, what are the implications from that down the road? As well, go ahead, because I see you rescheduled it for next fiscal year.
This one, to jump in, Mayor Martin, this is Tina Waremeister, Planning Director. Actually, it was not rescheduled. So just to clarify, we, the city did submit our priority development area applications and we were approved and they're, they're created. This was, this is this year's budget, current year budget. And so when we developed this budget, the, the applications and the requirements for the applications were not yet posted by MTC and ABA. So we assumed $10,000 in potential consultant assistance. Last time around, PDA applications were very involved. And this time, the regional agencies made it a lot easier on us. So we spent far less than the 10,000. So that's why you see almost $8,000 savings there. So it's not, we did create our PDAs, we're on track there. It's just cost us a lot less than we expected.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good news. Now, the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Study. I don't know, I note there's no asterisk pushing that to next year's budget, so what's up with that?
Actually, Councilmember, that one has been pushed into next year. So the items that have the asterisk are the ones that aren't scheduled for the following year.
Oh, okay. Okay, I misread that.
So we've done the PDA. And we've also, and so that, that project is taken care of. The unhoused in Pacifica Task Force, that is not scheduled for next year. Or funding is not scheduled for next year.
Okay, all right. So I just want, okay, so I misunderstood the, the asterisk thing. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great, great, great. Alrighty, so, and then we move to Public Works. And the, the current budget authorized Public Works to-
Excuse me, Lorenzo. Councilmember Vatalas had a question. I think it was similar thing.
My question was on the EDC budget because I do think that they have projects in process that they're working on. And so that gives them a zero budget for those projects. Is that correct?
Well, I'll find out tomorrow night what, what the status of those projects actually are.
Okay.
And whether or not they'll actually need to be funded in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And my question is, well, number one, there, the, the limited staffing for sustainability. The actual title was changed to sort of a generalist or of some sort, and it was not just sustainability, it was also economic development. So I wanted to remind everyone of that.
And we're gonna, we're gonna touch on that a little later, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
The other amount of savings comes from Public Works, savings in the hiring of part-time employees and savings related to the tree maintenance program. We also utilize the childcare reserves to the tune of almost $200,000. The childcare reserve has about a million dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, close to, close, about 700,000 or 800,000, I believe it's in your council, council report. And, and then we used another 300, almost $60,000 in undesigned fund balance to balance this year's projected deficit. Any further questions on this one?
Uh, Councilmember Vatalas, yeah?
Sorry, um, this is an obscure question, but I noticed the street sweeper is still sweeping the streets. Although since everyone's home, the streets are full of cars. So basically the street sweepers go right down the middle of the streets, wherever I've seen them. And it, do you think at this time that's a good use of our funds or do we have to continue with a contract? We do have outside person doing that? So is that required that we continue the contract with that?
Well, I think Director Bautista or Director Sun are on the call.
Currently, we have, we have a contract with the street sweeper. And they, you know, they, although the park, the cars are parked, we try to keep the streets clean. So it's, you know, it's part of the, like, stormwater management. You know, once, once cars start leaving, then they'll be sweeping the, the streets correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, so Sarah, can you, instead of going forward, can you go back to the original slide? Uh, the, the one before it, right there, yeah. I just quickly wanted to give you an overview. Now that we're done with the current year, I just quickly wanted to give you an overview of some of the issues that we're facing with revenues in the, in the budget year. We'll start with property taxes. As you can see, property taxes are about 36% of our general fund. Because of the lag in time between the actual assessment and the actual payment, we believe that our property taxes will stay stable for this year and next year and possibly the year after. Uh, but that third year is questionable. So our original property tax estimate was 13.3 million. We checked with our consultants who, who take care of our property tax estimates and they agreed that, you know, that, that number's still a good number. I'll be checking in with them frequently over the next few months, just to make sure that that number holds. Sales stats, because of the, the pandemic and the fact that our brick and mortar businesses have been closed and will most likely endure a slow recovery. We've reduced our sales stats about 10% from where they were at the mid-year. And so we're now at 1.984. We just wanted to be as conservative and as diligent as we can. We think that that number is, is the best number, but that's why that number went down. The transient occupancy tax. The city normally receives roughly $2 million in TOT on an annual basis. We, and about 400,000 of that plus are related to short-term rentals. Given that our hotels are dealing with single-digit occupancy right now, low, low, low double digits or single-digit occupancy, we're expecting to take a major hit in TOT. And so that number went from 2 million down to 1.2 million. Um, I, I believe I heard an article on the news the other day where Airbnb was projecting that their activity would be down about 50%. And so that also drives that number down. Uh, we're currently making about $400,000 a year just from Airbnb. Thanks to the voluntary collection agreement. The other taxes. And I always get questions about the other taxes, so I am ready this time. So the other taxes include our franchise tax, which is what our franchisees pay us to do business in Pacifica. Um, I'm, I'm keeping that estimate firm because there should be no reason why our franchisees, franchisees shouldn't be able to pay. Cannabis operations tax. We have two businesses in town and we've seen the annual impact of those businesses and so we've increased those revenues. We're also anticipating the other, hopefully the other four will come online here pretty soon. Our business license tax, in the budget year, I've dropped the business license tax estimate because I'm, I'm, I, I just don't know what's gonna happen to our brick and mortar businesses. And so I've dropped that estimate. Then we've got a utility users tax and a couple of other smaller taxes, but I just wanted to let you know what was in that category. Also, in that category is a vehicle license fees. And they're also, similar to property taxes, they're also looking to hold firm for the next, for this year and next year. So luckily, those estimates are still holding and they keep going up. And then there's a departmental program revenue and we'll, we'll see a little bit of, of that here in a little bit. We've, we've got changes or decreases in our parks program. And so you'll kind of see the impact in that, of that in a few, in a, in a little bit here. Any questions? I just wanted to take you through the, just sort of the ongoing revenues real quick and just gonna remind you of what's, what we're dealing with here. Okay? Yes, sir?
Mike O'Neill, you're on mute.
The transfer in CC Reserve, I don't recall ever seeing that before.
Because-
199,000?
Because those are the tools that I use to plug the hole. And we'll, we'll talk about that, that as we, as we go through the departmental budgets.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Proton Beckmeyer, did you have a question? Oh, okay, your hand up. Okay, no questions, Lorenzo.
Okay, great, great. So I'll quickly take you through this. Um, the transfer in, that's the transfer in from the childcare reserve. So as you can see in the current year, that's a hundred ninety-nine doll, a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars used to help balance the current year budget. And, um, and in the budget year, I'm expect, I'm anticipating, uh, another sixty-three thousand dollars from the childcare reserve. Um, the one ninety-nine represents, uh, a partial filling of the hole, um, that the childcare, we had to shut the childcare program down this year. Um, yet the expenses still remain, and so we're using some of those reserves to, uh, cover the expenses. Um, the sixty-three thousand that you see in the budget here is the actual deficit that the childcare program is scheduled to run. And so it has revenues of a certain amount, it has expenses of a certain amount. The expenses are sixty-three thousand dollars higher than the revenues. And so this was an opportunity to bring some more dollars in from reserves. We're expecting three hundred, yes, sir?
Um, this might be more from Mike Perez, but given the state budget issues, is there any threat or any rumblings about the subsidized childcare monies from the state to be in jeopardy?
Any council members? There we go. Sorry. Um, yeah, rumblings, right now, we're expecting to, uh, receive most of our subsidized funding. Childcare currently is, um, running virtual, uh, distance learning classes with our preschools, and this week, we actually just started, um, following up on some requirements that they have in regards to staff development and working with the families. So we are expected to receive the grant funding there. What we aren't expected to receive is full-cost payments um, for anyone who's not subsidized and pays a, a full fee. So right now, the expectation is that we will be getting that subsidized money.
Can you run it by me again when you said subsidy money for full class size? How does that work?
Full cost. So we, we have subsidized, we have subsidized families. It's about forty to forty-five percent of the children that use our programs. And that money comes, um, in the form of, uh, grants from the state. Income-eligible families are able to apply for those, and they pay a sliding scale, you know, from no money to, you know, whatever, per, per using. And then there's other families that we have that are full-cost families, and they, they don't receive a subsidy, they pay the full-cost price. So right now, we don't have childcare, the full-cost families, we're not serving them right now. So, um, but the state has said that they will, um, uh, continue to fund the grant. Um, and we are meeting, uh, various criteria and requirements for them in terms of the, um, you know, educational and, uh, things we're supposed to do for the preschool, and now they've added in uh, new requirements for, um, all of our subsidized families.
Okay. All right, so you, but next fiscal year, you feel pretty confident those revenues will stay?
Um, I, at this point, we're not sure when we will be going back. Um, and right now, you know, predicting through the end of June, uh, is, is all we have for sure. Um, but I think, um, the budget, even if we do end up, uh, dipping, you know, sixty-three thousand dollars into the, um, reserve, that's not bad. Um, uh, if we don't have to do that, we probably will be looking good. You know, we've only gone into the reserve twice, or once, excuse me, in eleven years. So that's why we have it for, you know, rainy days like this.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Um, along that same line, and actually the line right below that, I don't know if grants references childcare-specific or PD or-
Those aren't, those aren't childcare grants.
Okay, so can you elaborate on that? Because the number is a lot more in next year's budget than it was in the current year's budget, so I'm not really sure what that represents. And second question, in terms of the compensated absence reserve item where we had two hundred thousand budgeted this year. Is that for when people separate from the city and we anticipate needing to pay them out a certain amount of accrued, uh, earnings?
Yes.
And do we not anticipate that next year?
Yes, we are anticipating it next year, and part of the budget strategy that you'll see as we get into this, um, um, is that we're, we're, um, uh, recommending that we take, uh, a certain portion of the undesigned fund balance and use that to replenish the compensated absence reserve.
So right now, that's embedded in the use of general fund undesigned rather than having a, a number in the box?
No, that, that will be, that's a, that's usually a separate item. That's a separate item. You'll see that when we get to the budget strategy.
Okay.
And you'll also see the three hundred ten thousand dollars and where it's coming from.
Great, thank you.
And I just wanted to show you all, just, just sort of at a thirty thousand foot level, like, actually more like fifteen, what's driving our holes here. And, um, I just wanted, let me quickly get through this. Uh, we're gonna use, uh, about a million dollars of general fund undesigned reserve. We've got a certain amount of our general fund, which has been collected in the form of planning fees, and we'll be using those. Uh, we'll also be using ERAP, uh, that we anticipate getting in January. Now, we didn't, we don't want to put too much reliance on what we're getting in January, but I'm pretty comfortable that we'll at least be getting three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The other transfer in is dollars that come from Fund Nine, Fund Ten, Fund Sixteen, that get transferred in to support the work of Public Works, uh, for the work that they do for those funds. And, um, and Sarah, would you move to, not, not the next slide, but the slide after? So the first budget we're gonna talk about is, is the general government budget, and I'm just sort of kind of go through all the budgets real quick, and then we're gonna talk about the budget strategy. And as you all know, the, um, the general government, uh, mission is to manage and support the overall guidance of the city. Um, it contains the city council's budget, city manager's budget, city attorney's budget, economic development, and city clerk, and all the admin functions. Next slide. Wanted to show you, um, how the budget is constructed this year. And last year, we had a number of projects built into the budget, uh, that used one-time funding. And so what we're proposing to do is keep those dollars in the budget because they have become, um, basically a necessity. And, and we'll talk a little bit about these in, um, subsequent slides. But our, our IT network improvement, priority-based budgeting, I am still working with the vendor on that, so that may or may not be in next year's budget. Um, I, I still have to make that evaluation. Our document management system, Vision 2025, there are some HR issues that, um, uh, expenditures that we have to undertake. Um, the city is woefully behind in HR policy development. Um, as far as legal expenses, we are headed to the table with all eight bargaining units next year. And so we start that process in January twenty twenty-one. Um, the EDC budget has been rescheduled. Our additional election cost has also been rescheduled, and the staffing issue. And because of, we have implemented a one percent reduction in expenditures, and we've also implemented a, um, a deferment of, um, vehicle uh, replacement cost as well, and you'll see that in subsequent budgets. Um, no, there are no video vehicles attached to the general government budget, that's why you don't see it there. Next slide, please. And so for the projects that we're looking at for information technology, we are looking at, uh, moving to a citywide GIS suite. And, uh, this will allow, uh, Public Works and Planning, uh, to do their work on a more global and geographically based basis. Uh, the city is also looking to continue its, um, its efforts to upgrade the phone system. Uh, our phone system is circa nineteen eighty-nine ninety, somewhere around there. Um, we're also, um, uh, beginning to implement, or we have begun, we have begun to implement Microsoft, uh, Office Three, Three Sixty-Five. Um, this budget that you see before you was the first budget created using our Intranet, internal Intranet, which uses the, uh, uh, the Three Sixty-Five tools. And I can tell you personally, it was a pleasure, uh, because it allowed all the departments to collaborate. And there wasn't a whole lot of spreadsheets flying back and forth via email. It was all in one place, and we could all go to the same document at the same time, so it was really neat. Um, uh, priorities-based budgeting, I mentioned earlier that I'm still evaluating that. The document management system, um, we still want to continue that effort to digitize all of the paper that is floating around City Hall right now. I mentioned this, the human resources efforts that we're currently undertaking, and we would like to continue to pursue. Uh, next slide, please. In the city manager's office, there is a, uh, we wanna, uh, reschedule the Vision Twenty Twenty-Five, uh, a detailed project completion, um, uh, provisions and detailed financial forecasting and, and some critical economic development activities. Um, just a good, hard look at our potential and our future. Uh, we've rescheduled the election costs, uh, because we feel we might need them in the, the, the forthcoming year. And we've also rescheduled the limited staffing for sustainability, and this position would coordinate projects related to environmental and economic sustainability. As I mentioned earlier, we've rescheduled the, um, economic development, uh, budget as well. Next slide, please. And now we move to the Pacifica PD. And, um, their mission is, uh, it's the mission of the men and women of the Pacifico Police Department to protect and serve the members of our community. And their motto was a tradition of community service, and that's, uh, Chief Dan Stidl on the front. And let's move to the next di, slide. And so the PD is broken up into essentially two divisions, and that's the Admin Administrative Services Division, and then there's the Field Services Division. You have Captain Clements, um, who is over the Administrative and Investigative Services, and you've got, uh, Captain Glasgow over Field Services. Next slide, please. The PD's budget is basically, it's a baseline budget, so there's not a whole lot of, there's no additions to it. Uh, their baseline budget, because of salary increases and various other automatic increases, uh, increased to ten point four million this year. Um, they, uh, were able to come up with a one percent reduction, and we also deferred the replacement of, um, their contribution to the vehicle replacement, uh, um, fund. Um, their general fund one percent reduction was arrived at by, um, holding a position vacant uh, for a certain amount of months in addition to, uh, reductions in various line items within the police, the police budget. Next slide. North County Fire Authority, uh, Chief Myers is the fire chief there, and their motto, or their mission is to protect life, property, and the environment from fires, accidents, and medical emergencies and disasters. North County Fire has three, uh, the three programs within our budget, and there's fire emergency services, fire non-emergency services, and the paramedic services as coordinator. Next slide. Core services are the emergency and non-emergency response, fire and life safety code compliance, cause and origin, fire investigations, community outreach and public education, organizational support, strategy, and leadership. Next slide, please. Fire's budget, like, uh, the PD's budget, is essentially a baseline budget. Now, their budget, um, includes two hundred and eight thousand dollars, which we provided to, which we increased the budget, um, last year, um, using ERAP dollars and to help fire with additional support for their overtime. We've included that two hundred and eight thousand dollars in their budget this year as well. Um, fire is, um, um, has participated in the one percent reduction, and we've also deferred their, um, vehicle, um, contribution, vehicle replacement contribution. Fire's one percent reduction was as the result of reducing their small equipment, uh, small equipment line item, um, for, for the upcoming budget year. And so they, they felt that that was, uh, that was the line item that, that could most be used to contribute to the reduction. Next slide, please. Thank you, Sarah. I didn't know this slide had animation, but Parks always does things with a certain zeal. Um, and so we have Park Speeches and Recreation. Um, we've got Director Michael J. Perez. Uh, their mission is working together to build a happy, inclusive, connected community. And their divisions include childcare, recreation, senior services, and support and admin. Next slide, please. Parks's budget also is essentially a, a flat baseline budget. Uh, they participated in the one percent reduction, participated in the one percent reduction, um, by holding positions vacant. And also, um, uh, we also deferred about eleven thousand dollars in their vehicle contribution, uh, or their contribution to the vehicle replacement fund. Uh, they have the vans, by the way, in case you're wondering there, uh, about their vehicles. I put sixty-three thousand out on the edge just to let you know that, um, sixty-three thousand of this budget is being supported by the childcare reserve. So the general fund share of this, um, is actually offset by the sixty-three thousand. Um, I just put it out there for information, just to let you know. Now, the thing about, uh, the thing about the, the Parks budget is that we have maybe assumption that there would be very little to no summer programming. And so the budget reflects, um, those lack of revenues and those lack of expenditures, um, related to having no programming during the summer. Now, I know that there, there may be discussions in the future about some sort of modified scheduling, but for right now, um, that's the assumption. And so no summer budget reflects childcare, that no in-person childcare, no family or full-cost fees or revenues, but it still assumes that we will get, uh, the subcontracts. Um, for recreation, no summer camps, programs, or aquatics. Uh, for seniors, continued meals on wheels and grab-and-go lunch programs. So we're able to preserve some of the programs. But that's what this budget currently, that's the assumption driving this budget. And again, as time goes on and as estimates go on, and as we get better information, this number may morph, uh, going forward. Uh, next slide, please. Next department is our planning department, uh, which consists of the planning division, our building division, and code enforcement. And so you know the planning department supports our general plan, zoning ordinances, and associated development regulations. The building department issues permits for all new construction and provides plan check. And code enforcement, because everybody's happy to see code enforcement, investigates and acts on complaints of code violations. Next slide. The planning department, for being as small as it is, tends to be one of the more complex budgets. Uh, because there are so many great projects and great activities that are going on in this, in this budget. And so we start with the general plan and the local coastal plan update. And you can see, and I know, um, Councilmember Beckmeyer had a question about the grants. And as you can see, for the general plan and the local coastal plan, we're expecting grant funding to support some of that effort. Uh, the rest of it will be supported by that general fund balance that is associated with the collection of planning fees. Then we've got a zoning update, and we also expect that to be supported by grants as well, and, um, those, the planning, uh, fees in the, in the general fund budget. Housing element, uh, the document scan project, we'd like to, um, get that back into the budget. Uh, there are various ongoing projects, about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, but it's just a potpourri- but it's just a potpourri of various projects that just need to be addressed by the planning department. Um, and because of, of the way that we are funding this year's budget, I chose to use E-RAP to support those projects. Um, we could have used the undesigned, undesigned general fund balance as well, but I'm trying to preserve as much of that balance as well, uh, because I know that we still have twenty-one, twenty-two waiting for us as well. Um, so we've got our affordable housing impact fee study, coastal hazard mapping. Um, uh, planning also took a general fund one percent reduction and also deferment of the vehicle replacement as well. Next slide. Public Works, Engineering and Field Services. Sam Bautista is the deputy director. And so their mission is to maintain and repair city infrastructure in a, in a, in an efficient and cost-effective manner. Next slide. The Public Works is also sort of a very project-oriented budget. And so we start with uh, the flood and sea level rise resilience agency. Uh, this is a um, I believe a JPA that we became part of or an agency that we became part of, I believe, last year. And this forty thousand dollars, I believe, is year two of a three-year commitment um, for that agency. We also are rescheduling dollars for our tree maintenance program. There are, um, we're just in the middle of efforts to provide some formality to our tree maintenance efforts and various other efforts around um, uh, the, the trees in the city. And by the way, that GIS program that I mentioned earlier under the IT function actually will help us map the trees in the city as well. Public Works would also like to purchase a Bobcat. Um, apparently the, the old Bobcat is probably rusted and not doing well. And so that's in the budget and we're using, we're recommending one-time dollars from the undesigned balance. Uh, Public Works also has a number of um, contractual services that have increased this year, a lot of periodic um, surveys and uh, just various other things that they have to do. Um, they also would like to move to document scanning, uh, because there's a lot of paper in their area as well. They also contributed to the one percent reduction, um, basically by reducing line items in the Public Works budget and um, their vehicle uh, replacement contribution has also been deferred. Next slide, please. And so that concludes all of the departments that are in the general fund. We will come back to you on the twenty-sixth and talk to you about wastewater and the other funds. So getting back to the general fund budget, so the strategies that we used are that we, the same strategies that we, we provided to you at the uh, our last meeting, um, and that we're using the reserves um, as part of the overall strategy to balance uh, the current year general fund budget and a portion of the budget year general fund, budget. Uh, we want to, the annual excess E-RAP, um, we want to utilize a portion of that as part of the overall budget strategy to balance the twenty-twenty-one budget. As we mentioned earlier and as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, there's going to be a comprehensive mid-year budget assessment. We've already scheduled it for January eleventh. Now, we usually have the mid-year sometime either in the first or second year, the first or second uh, week in February. Now, it's going to be the first week in January. Uh, check with the finance staff and they will um, close as many accounts as they can to give me the best numbers they can. Uh, modifications regarding our cannabis revenues, again, because we've got full year implementation on our businesses where we feel confident that we can increase those cannabis revenue estimates. Next slide, please. Economic stimulus for Pacifico businesses, I don't think I need to say anything more. Um, we've, we've already passed that and um, we're off and running. Um, we wanted to defer our vehicle replacement and so that in totality yields about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars saved from the general fund. And so we're, we're pretty happy about that and so that helps mitigate that one point seven four seven million dollar deficit that we have. Um, we're looking at uh, further hiring freezes and possible reclassifications. Um, we're also looking at evaluating staffing mechanisms that could result in temporary financial savings. So we'll, we'll come back to you with uh, hopefully some more ideas. The reductions, the one percent reductions in the operational budget, we felt that one percent was adequate and uh, departments were able to um, creatively uh, meet that one percent reduction without it being too um, too invasive uh, on their programmatic activities. Um, and the last strategy is that we will continue to monitor the Fed and the state uh, for uh, relief, um, for our uh, uh, COVID um, impacts on the city. Um, I have one staff member that is monitoring all costs, additional costs associated with this pandemic and its effect on the city. And so whenever we have the opportunity to submit costs, we will be ready. Next slide, please. And so I wanted to show you um, how these funding strategies work with real numbers. So my estimate for the general fund undesigned balance um, at the end of the twenty uh, twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year, um, minus the activities that we have this year, I believe that there'll be six point six seven nine million dollars left for the new budget year. We wanted to increase our reserves from two point seven million to three point seven million. So there's a million dollars there. Compensated absences, we wanted to refill the uh, the compensated absences reserve. That million dollar transfer that you saw in the operational budget above is also, uh, we, we'd like to take that from the undesigned fund balance. We'd like to replenish the legal reserve because if you recall back at mid-year, we had to utilize seventy-five thousand dollars of that reserve uh, to address uh, just unprecedented legal costs this year. Um, and so we'd like to put that seventy-five thousand back and bring that reserve back to a hundred thousand. My estimate at this time, that would leave us with a undesigned cash balance of four point four million after all of these uh, adjustments are made. With E-RAP, there is a transfer of three hundred and fourteen thousand that um, I have placed in the budget and so while we expect more in E-RAP and I'll be talking with San Mateo County sometime this week or next to discuss E-RAP, just to make sure we're, we're good. Right now, I'm only committing three hundred and fourteen thousand. So you're probably wondering what's going on with the nongovernmental organizations? Well, they're funded as well, um, but they're funded in the uh, one-time uh, revenue category. And so we did find a way to fund them. Um, and if the E-RAP comes in to the levels that have been in the past, then we will use E-RAP to fund. But right now, I just needed to make sure that we're funding, that they were funded, but at the same time not commit uh, too greatly to E-RAP in, in this, in this particular budget year. Next slide. As I mentioned, some of the other strategies, the mid-year adjustment, uh, the cannabis revenues, economic stimulus, uh, the vehicle replacement, um, the hiring freeze, the reduction in the operational budgets and the pursuit of federal and state uh, relief from the uh, COVID-nineteen impacts. Next slide. And so as we move forward into the budget calendar, so we've, we've um, provided the uh, sort of the narrative budget and the adoption of the goals and priorities on the, uh, well, uh, well, we, we provided the narrative budget on April twenty-seventh. May fourth, the CIP went to the Planning Commission uh, for consistency. Um, we're doing the presentation tonight. Um, we're going to, we'll talk about the draft budget and we're going to talk about the fee schedule in a little bit. Uh, we'll be coming back to you on May twenty-sixth with any budget updates and the updates on the other funds. And uh, June eighth, we'll have our public hearings and our final presentation of the budget. We'll also bring the appropriations limit to you as well. And then um, on June twenty-second, um, we'll adopt the twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, but sometime in the fall, we'll be looking at the twenty-twenty-one budget even more closely, just to make sure that our revenues and our expenditure projections have held up. And sometime after June twenty-second and after budget adoption, your assistant city manager will be found um, uh, just, you know, in a state of bliss because it'll all be over for a few months. Um, let's go to the next slide, please. Any questions on the budget? Because we're going to move to the uh, fee schedule in just a second.
Uh, Mayor Verter Beckmeyer. Uh, on the last second, I think second to last slide, um, with specifically with regard to the three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of E-RAP that is being transferred to the general fund budget, I can't remember, was there a specific line item or departmental item that you applied that to?
Yes, I applied that to the um, the, sort of the bevy of ongoing projects that um, are happening in the planning department.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, this, that's, oh, perfect, that's the slide I wanted. Um, the general undesigned, general undesigned fund balance, uh, six point six million and we end with a four point four million.
Yes.
What is, what it, what did that look like for tw- twenty nineteen twenty?
Oh, the, 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 um, the undesigned was, I think it was seven point, seven point five or some, it was a, it was significantly higher.
Yes, I remember that.
But we use some of it to um, some of it to fund uh, planning projects in this current year. We use some of it to set up the one fifteen trust, which I still have to bring you. Um, and then we use some of it to plug the hole um, that occurred in this fiscal year, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand of it.
Okay. And so these two items on this page, uh, general fund reserve increased by a million and transfer to twenty-twenty-one operating budget, one million, um, those are also filling the hole, kind of.
Well, well, in a sense, but so what we're, what we're doing here is with the general fund reserve, as you, as you know, we have these formal reserves and they appear on our financial statement says assigned per dollars. And so we still want to continue the effort of rebuilding and building our reserves, our formal reserves. And so we're going to keep, we keep, we recommend that we keep that momentum going. At the same time that we're pulling money out of the undesigned balance to increase our formal reserves, we're going to need another million dollars to help us get through twenty twenty, twenty, the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. At our current expenditure level, yes.
Right, I mean, the loss of TOT and, and those kinds of things that you told us on the first slide.
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If, if I might um, add, uh, Mayor Martin, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, I just wanted to add on to what ACM Heinz was saying about the uh, the general fund reserve and that million dollars. The, the city's policy is to strive for a ten percent general fund reserve, which is actually a, a very low percentage compared to best practices. The policy actually says, if we were to achieve that level, then to look at trying to achieve a higher level. Um, this recommended million dollars here gets us to ten percent. We're, we're currently, I think, in the seven percent range um, funded in the, in the reserve. And going back to the budget strategies, keeping in mind the importance of uh, being prudent and preparing for our fiscal challenges for the next, for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And so that's what's driving that, that recommendation to keep our, keep our reserve funded at policy level.
Right. And what's waiting for us out there in the future is PERS, CalPERS, um, because when this initial pandemic hit, um, apparently their portfolio took a beating. And, and the people or the entities that have to repair that, you know, any issue to their portfolio tend to fall on the cities. And so I'm expecting increased expenditures in that area. We've also, as I mentioned earlier, we've got bargaining with all eight units next year. Um, and so that's, that's out there as well. And so then there are a number of other things. So City Manager Woodhouse and myself thought that this was the right, these were the right amounts to use at this time to still leave us liquid enough to address any future um, expenditures um, that we, we surmise are definitely coming down the block. Any further questions? All right. Sarah, can we move to the um, fee schedule? And um, and it's just one, I think it's just one slide, Sarah. There it is. And so, as I mentioned earlier, um, we will, we will be, the budget picture that I just showed you is fluid. Um, I think it's pretty stable to where, the way it is. Um, but I'm going to be keeping my ear to the ground uh, to see if any of those numbers, especially the numbers on the revenue side, move. I'm hoping they'll move in a positive way, but I have to be prepared in case they move the other way. And so um, it will definitely keep you up to speed, but that's where we are right now. Um, we will always bring a balanced budget to you and be prepared to explain to you how that budget is balanced. And so we move to the, the master fee schedule. So this is an introduction, just to show you what's, what's going on and um, and what's new. Um, so our master fee schedule uh, consists of fees that are of a flat dollar amount, recreational class fees or their fees associated with an amount of time spent on a service. Um, we use an hourly rate that reflects staff cost to provide the service. Um, we did a cost allocation plan and fee study with our friends at Willdan back in twenty thirteen and it is very fortuitous that Sam uh, or Deputy Director Bautista is working with Willdan now, uh, because I'll be chatting with them about the twenty-thirteen study because we're, we're kind of due for an update. Um, for twenty-twenty-one, we're proposing an increase in the hourly rates by the CPI and the CPI in February was two point nine percent, which is a little low for our part of the world, so it really sort of surprised me. Uh, so I'll be keeping an eye on that as well to see if it goes up uh, in subsequent months. And some of the fees and charges are staying same as in the prior year, uh, that should be twenty nineteen twenty and others have decreased. The proposed changes are highlighted in yellow. And so I'm going to take you to, we will start with packet page one sixty. And let me know when you're, you're all there. Um, I'll wait for head nodding. Okay, great, great. So let's start with one sixty and this is the city clerk's budget. And um, the only change that we have here is the, we've increased the appeals to the city council by two point nine percent. Um, we've also increased the storage media fees for CDs, thumb drives, et cetera, from five to- We've also increased the storage media fees for CDs, thumb drives, et cetera, from $5 to $15. And the reason we increased it to $15 is because it's consistent with Public Works and the PD. Packet page 161, we have the finance department. And, and all the, all the fees, for the most part, stays the same. We added a new fee because we now have the ability to take payments online. And so there's a convenience fee for that. And that convenience, convenience fee per transaction is $3. And we'll, we'll be working with the bank and the company that processes our payments to see if we can drive that fee down. But for right now, it's $3 per transaction. And that includes online payments for all planning activities, all Public Works activities. So it's a, it's a real neat convenience and we literally just brought this online about a week ago. Oh, thank you, thank you, City Clerk Coffee, very good. And so we literally brought that online about a week ago. And so I'm, I'm very pleased because it represents a, on a step forward for us as a city and our ability to sort of adapt to the new world of online payments. So let's move to the next packet page. Packet page 162. And I believe there is, the only changes that you see there are just changes in the hourly rate. And you can see that our hourly rate for encroachment permits and sidewalk repairs went from 216 to 222, and so that's an increase of the 2.9%. Everything else has either stayed the same or increased by the 2.9%. As we move to packet page 163, again, no, no surprises there. Again, we've, where we, where we can increase the fees by the CPI, we have increased the CPI, increased the fees. Let's see. And what I'll do in order to expedite things is just take you to the fees. I can take you to the fees that have changed? Or do you just want to, do you all just want to continue to go through each page? Okay.
Fees that have changed, just fine.
Okay, let's do that. All righty, so if we go to packet page 170. And so packet page 170 is the police section. And so the, the police have made some changes with their.
Mike, Mike has a question.
Yes, Mike.
Oh, I, actually, I just kind of flipped through these and I'm at, I'm on the last page looking at stuff. So you want me to wait till then or ask now?
Why don't we, why don't we wait till the last?
Okay, sorry.
All right. And so the photographic, the digital photograph, the PD wanted to make some changes to that, those particular fees. And they added the audio video request fees. And Chief Stidle can talk to you about those if you're, if you have any questions. And I, silence is consent. Okay. And then at the bottom of this page, the PD has also struck through an audio video CD DVD duplication fee as well. Over on packet page 171, the PD has added a fee related to a code section, unlawful, unlawful parking of oversized vehicles. And I think we know what that's, what's that's related to. And then we move to packet page 173. And the PD is adding a couple of cannabis-related fees related to employee background checks and owner-operator background checks. And then we move to packet page 180, which is under the Parks, Beaches and Recreation section. The Pacifica Beach Resource Parking Pass Annual. And apparently it has eligibility criterion where the income is 80% or less of the median income level of where they reside in California. And it's determined by the Pacifica Resource Center. So it looks like we're working in partnership with the PRC. And that's all I have. So Councilman O'Neill, did you have, can we, can we talk about your question?
Right, actually, mine was on page 169.
Okay.
And it's from planning and it's public nuisance abatement assessment. What does that act, what does that cover, public nuisance abatements?
Well, I'm sure Director Warmeister would be happy to talk to you about that. Maybe.
Let me get off of mute. So this indicates that if there is a public nuisance that is actually a severe safety violation where the city must go in and correct the violation after receiving, you know, proper warrants and, and the ability to access the property, that we then charge the property owner our full costs.
Okay. A question, and I, I was wondering if this covered what I was going to ask, but is it possible to have some sort of public nuisance fee for Airbnbs to get out of hand? We've had at least two, one recently and one a while back that were, you know, short-term rentals that were getting out of line. And I was wondering, is it possible to have some sort of fee for that? Being there's police involved, possibly planning, you know, whatever.
So I, I think I will maybe answer part of that and maybe defer to Assistant City Manager Heinz, who's very familiar with, with these. But right now, we used our typical code enforcement procedures, which, which involves a notice of violation to go out first and a certain period of time to cure the violation before any fines or fees citations are said, assessed. And if there's a different way to do that, perhaps Mr. Heinz or city engineer, or city attorney may have some suggestions.
So Councilman O'Neill, my plan for this, this spring was to bring back a, a number of recommended strategies related to short-term rentals. It's been about a year since we've regulated and legalized short-term rentals here in Pacifica. And we've had, had a number of instances where there has been a nuisance issue and various other issues. And so while we've passed our regulations to allow folks to do the, the short-term rental and become short-term rental operators, the next, the next regulations that I'll be bringing, recommending to you all will be regulations regarding compliance. And compliance, not only for registering in a timely fashion, but also compliance regarding the behavior of, of the short-term rental operators and the short-term rental participants or the residents.
It just seemed to me like the neighbors went through hell and it was kind of a long, protracted, you know what I mean, resolution to the problem. And I, if we could try to expedite that for the neighbors would be great.
I'm aware, because the neighbors, they call me.
Yeah, okay, well, they email us too, so.
So, so we definitely need something. Luckily, we've got some towns out there that have some very, very comprehensive regulatory tools to control the nuisance factor of short-term rentals.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Tina.
And Mayor Martin, that concludes my presentation.
Any, any other questions? Like, hang on, I lost my view here, I don't see any other hands, okay, good. Pretty comprehensive, thank you very much. I don't see any other. And are there any public comments, Clerk Coffee?
I don't see any public comments on this item.
Okay, great. So the proposed action is to accept the report, provide feedback and direction on the proposed 2021 general fund budget report and associated topics presented. Do you feel like you have feedback enough?
Yes, yes. And we'll, again, we'll continue to make sure that the council's made fully aware of any and all updates to these numbers. And I hope you all are okay with the approach that we've taken this year. Just making sure that we give you the overall budget picture, give you a quick overview of what's going on with the departments and leaving more time for analysis and your own questions about the budget process.
I'm very thankful for the strategy that you've taken. I think there are a lot of things that people may be upset about, myself included, but I know that you've pored over this and done your best to make adjustments and not cuts. So I appreciate that and I hope the community does too. So look forward to the next update and, you know, any changes, I know you're going to be keeping your eye on it. So thank you, Lorenzo.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Agreed, it's, I know it's a lot of work and it's continuous. And I know you'll be smiling when you're done.
So unless there's anything else, I will adjourn. I'd like to adjourn this evening with some kind thoughts to Councilmember Mary Beer and well wishes to Economic Development Manager, now retired, Thomas Meyer. So thank you all, have a good evening. I will adjourn tonight's meeting of the City of Pacifica Council at 10:05 PM. Thank you.